We're going to call the meeting to order if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Take note that all of our, well, all of our board members are here except for Mrs. Grimm, who I believe is running a few minutes late, and Mr. Rossi, who I would ask for us in the community to keep in our thoughts and prayers as he's battling a illness. And we're all rooting for John and looking forward to a speedy recovery for him. And with that, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine, and I'll make this very short. I just wanted to say a couple of words. One, that we were pleased to host the Shamady School District in our district this past week, and they came to look at our one-to-one implementation. Specifically, they were interested in our middle school, so we had them out to our middle school. And I know Michael Wagman and Tony Bickert were very excited to have them and host them. And I think what came from that that made us kind of proud and smile was, were the conversations that ensued afterward in asking their teachers, the teachers that were there, to view what we were doing, what their comments were, their observations. They gave us some great feedback and said that they really saw enthusiastic teachers and engaged students, how well behaved the students were. They enjoyed watching Kahoot, which is one of the apps that we use, using, seeing the teachers able to differentiate instruction in the classroom, using the iPads as a tool in addition to the books and paper were some of the comments. And said it wasn't iPads in every single period, that, you know, they saw them use the device when it was appropriate, but it wasn't just, you know, being forced as a tool, but it was used thoughtfully as a tool. So we were really excited about that. And then, secondly, I got a report from Mr. Durenzo today that I want to make sure that everyone knows that we have, congratulations to our high school boys' basketball team. I know some of you were probably there last evening, I unfortunately was not. And we beat Holy Ghost Prep 52 to 48, and Dr. Ziegler tells me that it came down to the wire, and we were able to hold on and get that win, so that's exciting news. We also wanted to say congratulations to Evan Wenick and Chris DeFrancesco, both wrestlers who are advancing to the PIAA regional championships at Oxford High School. And they're in pursuit of the PIAA championships in Hershey. Congratulations to senior hurdler Devon Fink, who qualified for the indoor track meet and field state championships at Penn State. And best of luck to our swimmers, who qualified for the PIAA district swimming championships last week at La Salle. And Pots Grove, he says, is taking a record of 15 swimmers to our district championships. So there were just so many things going on in athletics this week. I didn't want, wanted to make sure everybody heard about that and how exciting that is for us. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Policy Committee?
Good evening. I'd like to recognize the Policy Committee tonight, Mr. Matt Alexander, our Chair, and Mr. Rick Rubinowitz, Board Member, along with Mr. Justin Valentine. Last month, we talked about the graduation policy, and I felt that with much discussion around the table, that I wanted to take more time to talk to some of the stakeholders, if you will, that deal with the policy. We did, as I mentioned before, last month, at district office level, myself and Mr. Vores and principals took a look at it, but we wanted to go a little bit deeper. I sensed that with the board. So I wanted to take the time tonight to give you some information that you, we had discussed last time, and hopefully give you a better understanding of why our recommendation is what it is. And it continues to be that we, we'll talk about the graduation policy, but there's really no change other than Mrs. Grimm's recommendation. For review, I'd like to just have the Policy Committee, why we're doing the revisions to the graduation policy. Based on our minutes, we talked about early college admission, we talked about part-time college admissions, credit requirements have changed, and the graduation requirement. We also discussed last time during our Board Roundtable discussion that the graduation project was a concern and why we were getting rid of that particular policy. We did talk about that our solicitor at the time, the night, was Kyle Bergman, and he pointed out that Chapter 4 regulations only had the policy go through 2016. I did have the opportunity to explain that the high school and middle school use NAVYANCE, which is a college and career readiness program and a resource tool for our, for our children. We also pointed out that the high school has a college and career course, and again, I just wanted to reemphasize that as well. The recommendation came from Mrs. Grimm that we add the Western Montgomery Career and Technical Center to help for better clarification of who qualifies for a VAAL Victoria. So with that being said, I had the opportunity to talk about the graduation project with the high school's leadership team, if you will, the department heads that Dr. Ziegler works with on a, you know, weekly basis. I posed the question about, about the assignment to them, the value, what's best for kids, and how that's incorporated into their high school career. And I think they felt that, you know, there was a time that it had more value to, you know, to the students that we serve. They were really, seemed overwhelmingly convinced that with the state requirements of the Keystone exams, the remediation component that goes with that, along with the up-and-coming project-based assessment, that those resources would be better spent and the time better spent with their students in concentrating on those particular exams and tests. Also, as I mentioned last time, there has been curriculum changes along the way, you know, in math, in science, in the English component, as well as dual enrollment courses, more of an emphasis on AP courses. So they overwhelmingly thought as a department, and they went back to their constituents within the department, that discontinuing that graduation project would not be a disservice. I also had the opportunity to talk to the guidance department along the way. Very similar, they were concerned with the mandates that were before us as a school districts, making sure that all students were Keystone proficient. And also, they took a real good look at remediation and achievement as a top concern for the kids that were not proficient. And again, their concern was the project-based assessment, how's that's going to shake out as an extra, an extra, you know, activity for the students who are not proficient. They also felt that the college and career exploration course, you know, has established itself in, with over 220-some students, that is something that they, they, you know, push as a definite way to expand career and college readiness for our children. One of the things that they do also mention is the guidance staff does have a curriculum based on NAVYANCE that helps them utilize the resources that helps, you know, students and families make connections. We also had the opportunity to survey all senior students, they had an opportunity to weigh in on the issue. We thought it was best to survey the seniors, not so much the upcoming juniors that were going through the, through the program. There was 86 students responded, which included academic, AP, and Western Center students responded. Out of that 86 students that responded, the question was, did you finish all components of your graduation project on time? Seventy-five percent of the students did finish it on time, 25% did not. And there are a group of students right now still working on the completion of that project as we speak here tonight. Another question was, do you feel that completing the graduation product was, a project was a valuable experience? Forty-eight percent said, yes, it was, 52% said it was not a valuable experience. The third question, does your graduation project relate to future college and career goals? And that was split down the middle at 50, 50%. There was also a short, short answer, and it was really a lot, but I'm just going to paraphrase. Briefly explain, explain your graduation project, and it reflected a lot of the conversation that we had around the table last time when you took a look at this. Some people organized and painted an attic. Some people worked for veterinarians. Some people volunteered their time at senior centers. Some people did a recipe booklet, family tree recipe booklet. So it just goes on and on. Somebody called bingo at a senior center. They organized screenplay for Pirates of the Caribbean at a local theater. Some of them volunteered for PAL deck hockey. There are a lot of different coaches and volunteers at different Pee-wee leagues and organizations across, you know, across the, the community. It was more of a service type, there was more service-type activities than true project activities that they would actually dive into their careers moving forward. And the fifth question, the final question was, what would you like to say if you had any comments regarding the graduation project? The one, the number one, the first, the first person who responded, if it wasn't a state requirement, we shouldn't have to do it. Quite honestly, the graduation project takes up a lot of our time during school and doesn't really help me with my overall learning experience. So I just wanted to give you a flavor of what, what our seniors said about the project. And if you want to know specific or like to see specific, I'd be happy to share, share that with you. The question also came up last time about the concern that some of the junior parents haven't heard about it yet. I went back and researched that, and on September 19th, the guidance department actually met with the junior class to discuss PSAT registration at the first part of that assembly and the graduation project at the second part of that assembly. Dr. Ziegler, you know, has been in communication and is a reminder to all junior, junior class members, he does have a meeting at the end of this week, and he's going to go over the project once again with the junior class and the expectations of that project and the focus on career exploration and preparation. And there's a complete worksheet, if you will, that he has laid out with Dr. Beth Mays Coleman, who's his advisor, and she will walk the students through their, their responsibilities as an, there's an interest profile, there's a look-back portion of what you've done so far in your career educationally. The third task is to complete a survey. The fourth step is to build a resume, and the final step is to complete a recommendation or brag sheet, which is a resume, and then present that. So that is in the works. If you haven't heard about it, you'll hear about it by the end of the week. But I wanted to just give you another opportunity as the Policy Committee and the other board members to take a look at our recommendations. The changes were in yellow, and the change Mrs. Grimm asked us to do was to add, was in, was in pinkish-red. And our recommendation, again, for the graduation requirements are on the page four of four, and to end the graduation project after the class of 2016. Thank you.
Phil, thank you for that, and thank you for educating me on the senior project, because not having a high school-age kid, I haven't had to really, or I haven't really been exposed to it. So now that I've become aware that there's a service component for a lot of the kids, is there any way for us to, to allow students who wish to do a service project to do so? It's, it's really good for their chances to get into college as well, so even if it doesn't stimulate learning from that perspective, it could still be beneficial. I mean, I don't know if we have the resources to, to do that, and I recognize that that's a question, but, but the kids who are doing the kinds of things you described, I'd hate for it to stop because we're not making them do it anymore. That's my question.
What I wanted, it's, it's not a graduation requirement to do a service project, that's what it has turned into. Yeah, okay, okay, I just wanted to make, you know, make that clear. And one of the things that the career, the career course, along with the guidance curriculum, I think, I think, Rick, that that'll allow those students to continue to do that. And one of the things that, Ms. Phil, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Josh Oats, when he met with us and the students, how important it was to, when you, when you leave that, your, your footprint out on the internet, is that you want to put those positive, service-oriented footprints out there. So when, the first thing that comes up when you get Googled is that you've volunteered your time for service organizations. I know that's something, maybe, maybe Dr. Ziegler wants to weigh in, but that was one of the keynote takeaways that day for those students, and, and I think our hope is to continue that.
Yeah, the other piece is there's a number of components at the high school where students can already participate in community service or service back to the community. Spark the Wave is one. Spark the Wave is working with the Arboretum that's here in Upper Pots Grove Township. Key Club does a number of things throughout our community, helping to clean up the Skookle River and helping to clean up some local parks and service to our community. Our student government also gets involved. National Honor Society works to feed the homeless. So we have another, a number of groups that a student can plug into if they'd like to regarding service to the community.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment because I know I was part of the discussion last month about, you know, I didn't hear anything about my daughter and her service project. And I think, in the high school at least, with my daughter and her friends, whenever you say the graduation project, they're thinking the traditional graduation project. So when I said, are you doing anything with that, she said, no. And then I said, well, are you doing anything with career readiness? And she said, oh, yes, NAVYANCE and this and that and the other thing. So obviously, the juniors are starting, they've already started working on this. They just don't, in their heads, it's not the traditional graduation project. So they just don't, in their heads, they translate it as a different thing. So it's not the traditional thing, it's just a changing thing. But they are already starting on, on a lot of those components. I think she said she's halfway done with the career readiness path.
So at this time, I'm, Mr. Alexander, I'm looking for a little direction from the committee to, to move this policy forward.
Sure, I don't know if you guys have anything to add or concerns stopped me in my tracks, but I was, I was happy with this revision. I know the only, the only concern I had was about the senior project, and I think you really kind of hit it on the head at the last time, a month ago, when we talked about it, and you said that it, you've seen it in the past, being effective and complete-type project, but it's kind of straight away from that now. And I agree with Rick, I think our community and a lot of the younger kids benefit from the service that comes out of these senior projects right now. I guess the kids that I know that do it, I think they do it whether it was part of their senior project or not, and that's a great thing, coming out of Pots Grove, makes me proud of our kids. But it'd be nice if we could give them something, some kind of structure if they were looking for it, to help them with their service, and, and it sounds like we have that. So I'm, I'll still say I'm a little bit sad to see it go, but I know that it's, it's getting replaced by newer, newer things. So I was okay with this last time, and I think, I appreciate the clarification, and we have Patty's recommendation in here, which was an important one not to leave out, so. I think we should, I don't know if it's been out there on our webpage for people to look at.
It has not. I wanted to wait till I got the, you know, the recommendation of the board, and then we'll, we'll post it immediately tomorrow for the 30-day window, and then we'll be able to approve it next, next month.
So I, I think we're ready to go with that if, if you guys are in agreement.
I definitely think so, but I do agree that we need to get it posted and pay close attention to any feedback we get from the community about it, should we get any feedback.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. The Operations Committee?
Going to start with Mr. Hannah with the high school renovation update.
So I was just sending you a count of how many months it's been. It's been eight months since we started the project, and we're moving along. As we talked before, these phases are occupied, phases 1A, 1B. Contractors right now are working in this area, which were your auxiliary gym, the team rooms. They're working in this area, right here, which was your music area. They're working on the new gym, and they're working on the cafeteria. So looking at that, this is a picture of inside the new gym, and what the contractor is doing is getting the frost out of the ground. So it's been a hard winter, so before any substrate can be placed on that subgrade, the frost has to be removed. So we did that, we had our testing agency there to test and make sure there was no frost in the ground. So as you see, they graded it out, as of today, your stone, the stone subbase is down, and the concrete is set to be poured on Thursday. So that's, that's a big hurdle that they had to get over, and that's critical. This is a picture of the game toilet rooms that are off of the gym lobby. So these are getting close to being finished, the toilet partitions are in, you can see the ceilings are in. Moving down that corridor, straight back there is the doorway that would go into the gym foyer and into the gym. So this corridor is getting finished. You can see this is the AD's office, that's almost ready for him to move in, a little bit more finishing, so they're moving along pretty good in there. These are the team rooms. Now, these team rooms didn't have a lot of renovations in them, new lights, HVAC system was updated, some painting, so that's going along well. This is what you typically refer to, your rubber corridor, so that's, that's pretty well-finished. I think the grid's in there as of today. This is the fitness room, you can see the new deck is in place, and the, the mechanical infrastructure's in place, they're finishing that. This is the music area, the mirrors are in, finishing's moving along in there, you can see acoustic ceilings going in. This is that corridor coming down the music area, so your instrumental music is on the other side of this wall. So the finishes are going in there, I would expect by the time I come see you next month that those will be occupied. The cafeteria, I'm sure everybody's got a lot of concerns about the cafeteria, it's been sitting like that for quite some time. Unfortunately, the weather really closed in on that one, and it was very difficult to get work done with the cold and the snow. This was scheduled to be done in August, and the contractor is telling us it will be done. And I have confidence that it is possible to get it done. So looking, looking towards what's next, Phase 3, Phase 3A, 3B, and 3C, a lot of work to be done in summer. That encompasses this big green area here, which is your cafeteria, your library, the principal's office, these red areas, the first and second floor are your classrooms, and this is going to start the addition for the guidance area. So there's a lot of work that has to be done this summer. The contractors have been planning it, we've been working with your facilities department on how the moving's going to occur. There's a lot of planning and getting ready so we can hit the ground running this summer. Also, part of the summer work is this back, back driveway, this is the cafeteria addition. They should be finishing this up and getting that paid, so that'll pay a big burden off of all the tech that's going on back there. So that's pretty much what I got to report for you this month. Okay, any questions? See you next month.
Well, I had a question for you, Mr. Hannah.
Go ahead.
As far as the lights at the driveway, how would you go with that?
Yes, they, oops, sorry. They, looking at that gym, once that floor's in, they'll get the temporary lights in there, and then they'll shine them out there. I mean, it was tough just getting across that, that subgrade that was frozen.
I understand.
I mean, we're trying to do it as economically as possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can I just ask one, one quick question?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, with that slide that you have left there, the renovations that you're going to be doing around that driveway area, that's not going to start until after school's finished?
That's right, after school's finished.
Okay, because I was just curious about the Relay for Life.
Nope, that's after school's finished. Actually, it's going to start, it should be done by August 15th, so it will be after, after school starts.
Okay, because I was just thinking Relay for Life is at the beginning of June, that there's so many people on that side.
What day is that?
It's the, right after.
Oh, okay, yeah, we won't be tearing that apart, okay.
I had meetings with the logistical team for Relay for Life, a couple meetings thus far. They're really aware of the situation, I made them come out and look at it. So, and I explained to them that it wasn't going to get better, it shouldn't get any worse, but it won't get any better before, before this year's event. So they, they're fully aware.
My other question, I guess, was directed more towards maybe Dr. Ziegler. How are the students adjusting to being in a building that's being renovated?
Very well, actually. You know, I got to tell you, the contractors and Jim and his team have really worked nicely to accommodate education and make education the priority. We haven't had a lot of disruptions that the students would be aware of, and, and I think the students and, and the teachers have been doing really well with it, so.
Lot of excitement?
What's that?
Lot of excitement?
Yeah, we do have some excitement once in a while, yeah. And I, and I think there's a lot of energy and enthusiasm, you know, seeing the gym go up and the students driving in every day, seeing that, they're, they're really excited about it, so.
Thank you.
We had one additional item, and Dave's going to speak to you about the Ringing Rocks survey.
Yes, yeah, I know we're, we're well into the high school project, and Ringing Rocks has been open for about three years at this point. But in attempt to close out that project, or in attempt, when we started the project, we'll back up to the beginning, we were required to put on deposit with the township, the Lower Pots Grove Township, approximately $2 million to ensure that all the necessary improvements to the property took place. As we're down to the end of the project, we've gone through all the punch lists and everything like that, everything's in, in place, with the exception, the township engineers now would like us to survey the property and install concrete monuments identifying the property boundaries, which is not an unusual request, it's just something that hasn't been put in place on this property previously. At this point in time, we have still on deposit with the township about $194,000. Maybe off of a couple, couple thousand dollars. But the, in order to have the concrete monuments put in with the surveying process, we've gotten a price from Terraform Engineering, who is our civil engineer on, on the high school project, to survey the entire, the entire site, including the high school. And, and we'll put in the monuments in all the necessary places on the high school, so hopefully we don't have to have this level of work done at the end of the high school project. They're proposing a fee of $13,800 for that. I know we have a moratorium on non-emergency capital improvements, but in order to get $200,000 of our money back, I think it's an emergency. So we'll, if everybody, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer the questions, otherwise we'll bring it as a potential action item at our next meeting.
I want to have questions, but I will reserve them because they would not be positive.
Just say that I do not have the, let me back up. When you enter a project, and whether we like it or not, we're treated like any other land developer in the township, and you sign a township, and they're called different names, Land Development Subdivision, ESCO Agreement, Tri-Party Agreement, and I don't have the agreement in front of you, but I can bet you, and I'll be glad to give odds, that we agreed to do this when we signed the development agreement, it's pretty standard fare, that the township, whether it's even a residential subdivision, they'll require monuments in the corner of residential lots. And so this is something that, again, I mean, you're contractually obligated to do for getting your money back, you're contractually obligated to do it. So whatever choice comments you have, I will certainly listen to gladly at the next meeting, but just wanted to comment that there's a contractual obligation to do that, and certainly even absent that, as Dave has pointed out, and I'll leave that to your judgment, it might be a sound investment to invest the $13,000 to get our close to $200,000 back. $200,000 back.
There's no question about that. And if it's, if we're contractually obligated and we agree to do it, then that's a different story than if this is brought on us after the fact. I actually would like to know whether that, the one is, which one it is, but obviously, regardless, we've got to get our $200,000 back.
I'll be glad, Dave, or I'll take a look at that and give you the answer. It's a fair question. But, as I said, you know, as you can tell by my hairline, I've done it once or twice before. I've never seen a township development agreement without that requirement, so we'll take a peek.
My question was, the $13,000, does that include both the high school and the, that
price includes both? Okay. So, we're kind of getting two for one here. Okay.
What's the timeframe of the timeline? So, we get the study, and when are we expected to have our funds returned, right? Our refund?
Once, once the survey is done and the concrete monuments are installed, it'll be presented to the township engineer. He'll review it. And based on that review, assuming everything meets his requirements, we can put in an application for release of the ESCRO funds.
To answer your question, you should get your money back, and it is statutorily guided. I mean, sometimes it's lost in the breach, but if we had to put the township to the test, there is a statutory requirement upon submission. They have so many days to review it. It's normally in the context of an engineered improvement, not so much this. This should be, I would think, without much question. So, after you get done the survey, and I won't speak to that, you should get your money, certainly within 60 days.
Got it. After the survey?
After the survey.
Right. Okay.
And there wouldn't be any additional fees to the township through this process?
Dave, there's going to be... There's going to be an engineering review fee.
Yeah, there'll be an engineering review, and you'll pay for it.
So, to keep our moratorium, we're going to net $185. Just kidding. Just, that's for my friends over here. Thanks, Dave. That was a joke, guys. All right, Finance Committee?
Tonight, we reserved the entire time to talk about the preliminary budget, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments that, you know, this is part of our goal for this year, and the superintendent's goals, to work on a more transparent budgeting process and make it a little bit more user-friendly for the board to understand the budget. And so, Dave has been working very hard with Ron Linky, Dr. Shirk, and myself, and we've been scouring the budget, looking at different ways to slice and dice the budget, to be able to explain it to you in a user-friendly fashion. And what we plan to do is kind of take you through that this evening, and then come back at the next committee meeting, which is in a month from now, and have, and dedicate that entire evening, or at least the lion's share of it, you know, if something else comes up, we'll let you know, to that budgeting process, and have the departments then justify their pieces of the budget, all in that, in that same evening, using a particular format that you'll kind of see what that looks like tonight, as we take you through this binder. So, that's just something new that we haven't done before, but we're trying to do that to make it a better process for you, and more understandable, and more thorough. So, with that being said, I will turn it over to Dave, and you can grab your binder, and he'll, he'll take you through it.
Thanks, Shelley. We tried to present the budget in a couple of different ways, figuring that some information might mean something different to certain people, and it might be more understandable in different formats. So, hopefully, hopefully you like what you see here. If there's additional information or some different presentation method that you would like to see, we can certainly address that going forward. But if you go to your table of contents, just to give you an overview of what we're going to look at tonight, the beginning, there's an introduction. We'll call that like an executive summary of the budget, very, very high level. You've already gotten the preliminary budget document. And that presented the budget in a method that grouped it by function. Function in a school district is like a department or a cost center in a corporation. So, for example, the 1100s would be regular education, and then we broke down the cost by major object underneath that, which would be like the expense line, salaries, benefits, contracted services. That's the way the preliminary budget document is created, and it's mandated that way by PDE. But we decided, while we have a tab in here for you to put your preliminary budget document in, so you can have all your documents together, we felt that for most people, the more logical means of organizing the, your thoughts are just on the account level. How much do we pay for salaries? And what type of salaries are we paying for? And how much do we pay for benefit, and benefits, and what types of benefits we're paying for, district-wide, rather than chunking it up by, by the function? So, that's what's under Tab Two, and we'll go through that in a little bit more detail. Under Tab Three of your binder, we also felt that it was important for you to see what it costs to run our various buildings, and our various non-building cost centers that we have. So, we have, we'll go through building by building, school by school, but we also have some, some components of our budget that are district-wide initiatives. For example, the technology department is district-wide. The superintendent's office is district-wide. The business office is district-wide. There's no way of breaking that down logically, other than just a pure allocation to a building. We also have some costs that are broken down by an elementary division or a secondary division. And this happens more in the curriculum and special education departments. So, we'll have some costs for curriculum that are, that only benefit the elementary band of schools. But we may, but we don't have it broken down by Ringing Rocks Lower and West. And we have some things that are, that only benefit the middle and high school, and which are in the secondary band. And then we also have some federal grants that we're going to, we're going to show you what, what funding we get and roughly where we spend those funds, okay? Under Tab Four, we have information on our debt, our debt service requirements, and where we stand now, and where we will stand, assuming we have another bond issue for the high school at roughly the same level that we, that we are now. We expect this book to be your budget bible, if you will, that you can bring to these meetings, when you, when we have the departmental presentations in our next meeting. There's a, there's a tab in here for you to insert that data, as we talk about potential budget cuts throughout the rest of the budget cycle. You'll have room to put your information in here at that point in time. So, that, that's what we're going to look at. The budget is, as we've discussed, this is, this is based on a, the data is very similar to the preliminary budget, although there might be some minor tweaks here or there. But as you recall, we agreed not to apply for exceptions. So, that limits our tax increase for this year to the Act One Index, which is 2.4%. At that level of tax increase, we currently sit with an $841,000 shortfall, unplanned shortfall. It's actually going to be a larger deficit than that, but we had planned for $750,000, to use $750,000 of our Peasars Reserve to defray the costs this year. So, beyond that, we have $841,000 that we will either need to absorb or find ways of cutting, as we go through the process. We talked about some of our major cost drivers. We spoke about these before. The largest cost driver is the increase in the Peasars contributions for this year, which is going to be about $1.37 million. Next year will be another large increase, and then the increases will get smaller over the next few years, but they'll continue to go up. In addition to that, $807,000 of additional salaries are included in the budget for next year. That represents a slightly over 3% total increase in compensation. As I indicated previously, we had some special ed staff that were added in the current year to address specific needs of specific children. They were not budgeted in this year, so while, because they weren't budgeted in this year's budget, and I'm comparing budget to budget, it appears as though it's an increase in the 2015-16 budget, when really, the expenses were incurred in this year. In addition to that, the last major item that we saw was, an increase in expenditures was in the area of charter school tuitions, which have gone up approximately $320,000 in this budget. On the revenue side, we're projecting everything being relatively stable, with the exception of our school-based access program, which we see dropping this year, due to some changes at the state level over the last few years. A new administrator for that program implemented new procedures and somewhat questionable training. The bottom line is that districts across the state have seen a significant reduction in the amounts generated from providing those medically necessary services to our special needs population. As a result, we don't think that we can continue to budget the revenue, the money we draw down from that program, at the same level as we have. So, we're looking at a $200,000 decrease in that line item. On the increase side, the state does contribute half of the retirement cost increase and half of the social security cost increase. So, we, we have budgeted for those two subsidies to go up, along with the salary percentages. All other state revenues, we're budgeting to be the same, with the new governor and the new, and the situation that he's come into as the new governor. We don't know if that's going to be accurate, if he'll be able to give us more, or if he's going to have to retract some of the, some of the revenues that he's been providing to us. The, excuse me, the governor is supposed to announce his budget on March 3rd, so we'll have a better idea at our next meeting, where we think the governor's view, view is going. So, that's the summary. Want to spend a little bit more time. We have a revenue review, then, that's pretty much, we hit that as well. There are some detailed pages that follow the revenue, on pages, starting on page 10. If we just want to look at that for a second, you'll, you'll see common presentation methodologies throughout the rest of the, rest of the document. I'll just spend a minute going over it with you. We've gone back and captured three years of history, for comparison purposes, as well as the current year budget, and the current year projected revenue streams, and what's projected, what's budgeted for next year, and quantified the difference on a, on a line item basis for your review. We're going to do this same, same methodology in the expenditures by object, and in the So, if we go to Tab Two, there, there is probably 20 pages of explanation of a three-page report that follows. But I think there's a lot of information on the three-page report, which starts on It starts out with salaries by the various categories, then, then benefits, contracted services, and on through the rest of the budget. I want to caution you to read the, read the text that's in front of it first, before you go to the detail, because there, there have been some reclassifications of salaries between line items in the budget this year, primarily in the area of administrative salaries. There were some salaries that were captured in other, other objects in the past. For example, some technology salaries that were coded in the 141 category, because that is where the technology department salaries for the, for the, the, the techs in the building and things like that. We just had the administrators coded there in the past. So, this year, we moved them from that area to the administrator line. It's not an increase in, in salaries, it's a relocation of salaries. So, and that happened in a couple areas, but the destination has been in the, in the administrators.
I think just, just to piggyback off of what Dave's saying, in, in his thorough review of the division system, he's just trying to clean up...
Right.
...some of the things where they might have been really misclassified, but we're putting them in the right category, so...
Correct.
That's what, that's what you're going to say.
And, and in the past, because we, we didn't share at this level of detail, it was a salary, it was a salary, it was a salary, so it really didn't make a lot of difference. But we wanted to get things in the proper classification for your review as, as we go forward. From this point forward, they'll all be in that, those categories going forward. In the, in the benefit categories, at this point in time, we're budgeting no increases in healthcare premiums for the upcoming school year. There is the possibility, we're, we're waiting for a meeting next month with our benefit consultants and CPAS to determine what the appropriate rate action will be. For our core health plan, I think it's reasonable that we have another reduction this year. We've continued to have very positive claims experience, so I think there is a, a reduction expected, just have not quantified that, the level of that reduction at this point in time. Prescription coverage is not going nearly as well. There are a couple things in the, in the marketplace right now that are causing everybody a lot of, a lot of headaches, but, you know, specifically here in Pots Grove, there's been a significant rise in specialty drugs. These are injectable drugs for very complex medical conditions that are very, potentially life-saving drugs, but very, very, very expensive drugs. And then there's also a new thing that's arisen on the, on the market this year, which is compounding. And these are typically topical ointments that are created at specialty pharmacies, where they take a little bit of this, and a little bit of that, and a little bit of this, and they mix it all together, and they rub it on your arm, and it's supposed to make you feel better. But it, again, because you're taking multiple drugs and combining them, and there's a lot of labor involved, they charge a lot of money for it. So, we've seen a significant influx in those, increase in those costs. Bottom line is that our, our prescription benefits are continuing to rise at a higher-than-anticipated We're still hoping to be able to keep our premiums at the same level, because through CPAS, we're negotiating a potential change in benefit carriers. Actually, it's not a change for us. It's, it's the same carrier, but through, through a coalition that will save us substantial premiums. So, we may have a reduction in, in cost, or be able to maintain our cost, even though the claims experience has been bad this year so far.
Dave?
Yes?
Is compounding something that, that is FDA-approved? I mean, I, maybe you don't know the answer, but I mean, I just wonder if we... I just wonder if we are, we need to cover something that sounds like, what do they call it, off-market usage of drugs?
I, I think your assessment is fairly accurate, and actually, we've taken some steps through, actually, Express Scripts has taken some steps, who's our pharmaceutical benefit provider, to reduce or eliminate coverage of compounding. And it's not because we don't want to pay for the drug, but they're saying there's no definitive medical documentation that it actually does what it's supposed to do. So, so we are looking at some savings as a result of those changes. Moving on, then, we go into our purchased professional services, our three hundred accounts. The three twenties are primarily intermediate unit costs. Again, there's, there's descriptions of them in, in the, in the packet. Three thirties are our contracted services for any number of professional services, as well as our three nineties. A lot of these costs are incurred in the special education department for contractor, contracted OTs and PTs and, and speech therapists and things like that. The four hundreds rentals and some, some utility services, again, we, we have a very modest three percent increase there. The five hundred categories, the, the one area that stands out is five sixty-two, which is the charter schools, which we talked about previously, with a budgeted increase of three hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars in the, in the budget, which represents twenty percent increase in that line item.
Dave, can I make a couple comments about the VOTEC?
Sure.
Please. Also, in that area, five sixty-four is the technical school tuition, and you can see that line item in there, and it doesn't appear, it appears as if we're budgeting two percent above what we budgeted last year. But what I'm asking you to consider, especially if you sit on the JOC board, is that I've been working as the superintendent of record with the other superintendents and the director to try to get that budget down. We do believe that we're over-budgeted, we have so, a lot of surplus monies, some monies may be coming back to the school district. We're trying to fix that budgeting process such that the budget is, is a little bit more accurate, less inflated. And so when you hear that budget being presented, when it is presented, which I believe will be in April, I'm, we're asking that you consider waiting to authorize a budget until we can have definitive data, because what impacts that budget, obviously, are additions to personnel that are difficult to ascertain this early, because we're looking at enrollment numbers for the various programs at the VOTEC. We're also looking at what, in the past, how have we over-budgeted, where can we cut costs so that we're not over-budgeting, so that we can keep that, those monies in the local districts in order to pass our budgets? So I'm just asking you to consider that as you, as you listen to that budget presentation moving forward in the spring, and then I can make some recommendations to you at that time.
As a piggyback to that, we have had a model in place over the past decade where any surplus generated in the, in the Western Center would be used to reduce our contributions in a, not the next fiscal year, because they wouldn't have the, the information, audited information then, but it would be the second subsequent fiscal year. Bottom line was, we didn't think we were getting the money back timely. As business managers and superintendents, we've met and discussed this. So we're proposing making a change this year, where any accumulated surplus is going to come back to the three district, the three sending districts, based on their, their use. And then we'll have some money, and that may come in this year. But then there won't be any money there to, to defray the cost of the school tuition for, for fifteen sixteen. So you may actually see this budget line go up before we get to the end of the year, even if we're able to cut the, trim the budget down to a more tolerable level. It still may go up from where we have it now, because I think there was like three hundred thousand dollars of funds in there to, to defray the cost in, in the current year. We're still waiting to see where, where that ends up at this point in time. But what I'm going to propose doing is whatever money we get back, I propose creating a, a reserve of that money to defray increases as we go forward, specifically with the, with, in connection with the Western Center. Because we might get a lump sum this year, but if we can use that to defray the cost for two or three years, then we'll, we'll level fund that line item, if you will. Into the six hundred categories, this is all labeled as supplies, but as you can see, it includes gasoline, it includes natural gas, our, our utilities, and six eighteen, which is software. So you can see what the increases there are, are there in a year-over-year basis. One of the biggest issues in software happens to be mine. I apologize. We purchased our accounting software in two thousand and seven. We've been notified that they're going to discontinue support on our version, and they're recommending an upgrade. So we have in here approximately forty thousand dollars budgeted for, for an upgrade in, in the accounting software. In advance, can we go another year? Yes, but if we have a problem, we won't have anybody to help us. So we think it's probably money well spent. The forty thousand dollars is not a guarantee at this point in time. We're trying to identify what, what is needed, but we put in a forty thousand dollar placeholder. Seven hundreds are our equipment lines, and as you can see, they're, they're actually down a bit. In the eight hundred categories, while it's called other objects, it's primarily dues throughout the educational area and interest expense on our bond issues on a district-wide basis. So our, our interest is scheduled to go up significantly this year, because we have more bond issues outstanding with the high school project. However, if you go to the next line down, the nine hundreds, you'll see that our principal payments are scheduled to drop off significantly this year. So the net of the two is a, is a savings to the district. I think that's all I have on, on this one. As I said, there's a, a lengthy description of the, the components and an explanation of what caused the increases in each line item. Please take your time and review that and get back to me with any questions you may Moving forward to tab three, as I, as I indicated, we have, we wanted to capture information on a building-level basis for you, and we wanted to, to implement some, some metrics for you to compare, to make it easier for you to compare one building to another. So for the educational and administrative costs for each building, we've implemented a per-student calculation, and for the facility-related costs, we've created a per-square-foot calculation, so that you can compare the, the costs on a, on a, on a standardized basis, building to building. I put forth the number of people that are employed in each of the buildings, number of students in each of the buildings, the size of the buildings, for your, for your viewing pleasure. And incorporated in the summary document at the front of the section is a, is a comparison on a, on a per-pupil basis graphically. If you look at it, the, the elementary schools are, West Pots Grove is probably the highest per-pupil cost, and that's probably more driven by the number of pupils in that building than it is by the costs incurred at that building. So if you're paying a teacher to teach twenty kids or a teacher to teach twenty-three kids, it's still the same cost, but the one with the lower number of students in the classroom will, will have a higher cost per student. So everything is really in a, in a fairly narrow deviation band until you get to the high school, and there's a couple, couple unique components of the high school costs that are not in the other, other schools. Specifically, if you, if we start at the top of the graph, you'll see a green band, which represents student activities. That is all the student athletics costs and student activity fund costs, basically Mr. Durenzo's office and all the services he performs for the district. That is captured solely in the high school, even though some of the, the students at the middle school are benefited to some degree from it, it's not allocated down to the middle school. So that's the entire athletics program. The gray component, which is the one, two, three, four, fifth one down, is the vocational school. It's our tech school. Since only high school kids can go to the tech school, that's where the tech school is captured. If you take those two components out of the high school, things are pretty close to, at the middle school level. On a square footage basis, on the next page, on page twenty-seven, you'll see graphically that Ringing Rocks and West Pots Grove Elementary School have a higher cost per square foot. Once again, I think that's more a factor of the size of the building than the staffing. And it's really only a dollar or two dollars per square foot difference. It's not a, it's not a big deviation. So beginning on, I'm just going to show you one here so that you can, you can compare and contrast later, but on page twenty-eight, we have dividers in here by building. Lower Pots Grove is the first building, and this is captured how we capture things in our accounting system, which is by our school code. So lower is code eleven, so they're the first ones up. Once again, you'll see that we have the three, three-year history presented at the left, as well as the current year budget and projected in the middle under, in the green columns, and the two thousand fifteen sixteen budget next to that, along with the, the deviation budget-to-budget from fourteen fifteen to fifteen sixteen. And then the cost per pupil and the cost per square foot for each, each category. This is not how we have the building's budget, because this incorporates salaries, it incorporates the facilities department, things like that, that are attributed to their building. The, the building budgets are a much smaller component of this, basically the contracted services, the supplies, the equipment, the dues and fees. Okay? And we have similar data presented for the other four buildings, which run through pages forty, forty, forty-four. Beginning on page forty-five, we have the district-wide components. These, as I indicated, are things like the technology department, the business office, and the superintendent's office. There's also some curricular items, components in here as well. But these are things that are, benefit the entire school district, not a specific building Following the district-wide presentation are the elementary and secondary divisions. You'll see most of the costs here focused in the eleven hundreds and twelve hundreds, which are regular education and special education, but there are some components beyond that, And then finally, we have our grants, which start on page fifty-four. This is a similar summary, but this represents the expenditures on, on federal or, or local So that would be our Title I, our Title II, our IDEA program, which helps our handicap population, and our school-based access program. So these numbers are, correlate to a revenue component, so that they're, they're zero-based. We incur these costs, we receive revenue, recognize revenue equal to these expenses. And then finally, and under tab four, our, is the summary of our bond issues that we have outstanding. These are outstanding as of today, and we will be coming to you on the tenth of March with a refinancing of the two thousand nine A bond issue, I believe. And then later in the year, the two thousand ten bond issue will be coming up for potential refinancing, which should generate some savings to the district on both of those issues. But the thing I want to point out to you here, if you look on page fifty-eight, under our debt limit and borrowing capacity, there's, there's a calculation made as part of our financial statement presentation, preparation package that we submit to the school, to PDE at the end of each fiscal year. And there's a math, arithmetic calculation of how much a district can borrow. And that's basically, they take your last three years' revenues, calculate an average, and you're permitted to borrow two hundred and twenty-five percent of that number. Okay? In our case, that number is a hundred and twenty-nine million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. That's our, that's our capacity. Currently, what's reflected as outstanding at the, in the state's eyes is sixty-six million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we're significantly under our, our capacity to borrow. Not that we want to borrow that much money, but just so you know, we're not, we're not at risk of exceeding our capacity. But included in that, just to make it a little bit better yet, is in two thousand and six, when Act One came into existence, school districts across the state filed paperwork to have what was known as grandfather debt. And what that means was, when Act One came into play, you could, you could get an exception for the cost increase for borrowing grandfather debt to allow us to raise our taxes beyond the index. Okay? But it was only good while the debt was in existence, and after it went away, you had to refund the, you, you had to reduce the millage back to its prior level. Okay? So we took out some debt that way. I think it was like forty-one million dollars we took out in that, in that I think it was like $41 million we took out in that, in that manner. We actually used some for the Ringing Rocks project, but we never raised the taxes above the index. So it really didn't have any, any value. But the included in that outstanding amount of $66 million is just shy of $17 million that we have never used of that borrowing. And as time goes by, that goes away. After a certain period of time, there's nothing left to borrow and that'll go away. But we have no intent to borrow that money, but it's incorporated in that 66 million. So what we really have outstanding is, is more like 48, 49 million dollars.
Dave, one quick question on the, the remaining borrowing capacity, which is even greater than, than, than what you have here because of the 16 million that you just mentioned. While it may be technically possible for us to borrow that, we couldn't borrow into that, very much into that amount without, without having an impact on taxes, correct?
That's correct. Absolutely. Like I said, there's no, no intent to borrow at that level. It's, the only reason I'm pointing it out is when you have rapidly growing school districts where there's lots of building going on, districts do bump up against that limit. And I'm just showing to you that we're not at risk of that happening.
Well, I mean, we are at risk if, if there were a lot of developments that were approved and, and influx of students and we were beyond our capacity, right?
If, if our district were to grow 20%, 30% over the next few years and we had to add several schools, yes, it could, it could come into play. Following that, we have some information that you've seen before as part of our, our bond issues. On page 59 is the summary of our current outstanding indebtedness, both on a gross basis, which is the, the amount of debt service that's required over the next 17 years or 12 years, like 13 years, I guess it is. And then at the bottom, the local efforts, that's after deducting what the state will reimburse us as part of the plan con process. We have our bond rating from Standard and Poor's, which was again confirmed at the AA level, which is a very positive bond rating. And the final document in the packet is a recap of what our, what our plan was for the high school financing. We have, we have borrowed step one and two. And in January of next year, I should, I expect to be coming to you with step three. Might actually be in December, but the settlement will have to be in January to get the best rates. Currently, we're projecting borrowing in this model, $8.7 million. We're gonna, we're gonna wait and see what we really think we're gonna need, how, how change orders are going, how construction is going at that point in time to see if we can adjust that down at all. But this was based on a, an early model of what we thought we'd need over time. And I'm tired. So any questions you guys might have?
I had one question way back in the beginning. On page 11 of tab one, looking at the transfer taxes. Now that is a percentage of the value of a home when it is sold or when it is purchased?
Both.
Okay, okay. So it looks on this like over the past few years that our transfer taxes have been going up. There's been some speculation in the district that nobody wants to buy a house here or nobody can sell their house here. And these numbers seem to refute that because the transfer taxes seem to be going up over the past few years. Is that because of number or because of value or both?
Actually, I can't, I can't say what, what the genesis is. The, we're at a much lower level of transfer taxes now than we were five or six years ago. We, we, like every other district in the state, got hit hard in 2008. And it's been, we, we were slow going into the recession and we're gonna be slow coming out of the recession. They're stable. At, at worst, they're stable. I'd like to see some growth in that area. We have seen some growth in the earned income tax numbers and that's encouraging. We haven't seen as much percentage increase in the, in the transfer taxes.
Do you know about how many numbers of homes this would?
I, I don't. I can, I can see if I can.
Numbers can be skewed a little bit based on one large sale too. I mean, it's not only homes, it's industries. And I don't, we don't have in Pots Grove a huge industrial base, but it, it could be skewed by a big sale. And I mean, for example, in a neighboring district where the Rome Polack building sold for $30 million, there was a huge bump in transfer tax, you know, do the math. And so, you know, I don't know your numbers and I'll defer to Dave, but I just wanted to let you know, it's not only residences either. It's a sale of business and commercial and industrial property. It's the percentage on any transfer of real estate.
If that's something you could get, I think that would be helpful information just because that's been talked about a lot. It's been discussed a lot. And so I just think it would be, to have that bullet point or to have that, you know, reference point, that would be helpful.
I think that, I'm not sure how helpful it would be because, because it's only use, even if we're growing slightly with our transfer tax, if our neighboring districts are growing at a much faster rate, then, then that's still evidence that there's issues with our economy compared with our neighbors. I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that you gather that data either. I'm just saying that, that I'm not sure. The fact that it's gone up a little bit over a few years tells us a whole heck of a lot. But I mean, I'm glad it is.
The first thing I want to do is thank you for putting this together. Just since we first, I first came on the board, how this has evolved into a much more streamlined process. Last year, we asked for, you know, a little bit more accountability. And I think we put it into the goals for Ms. Viola and for the administration to really come up with a process that is more transparent, more simplified, easier to, to use. And without digging into this with, you know, with a fine-tooth comb here, we, on the surface, this looks like a document that really is a good starting point for us. So thank you for that. And I look forward to having a really robust discussion on this, on the budget this year. And I haven't done this tonight. I think I was having flashbacks from how long the last meeting went. But we want to have public comment if there's any questions from those who are here tonight on any of the topics that were discussed, starting with the preliminary budget discussion. If there's any questions. Mr. Parker? I'm just going to ask that, if you have, just the questions, and if you could use the microphone and if you could keep your comments wrapped around what we discussed tonight. Thank you.
Continue to be concerned with the numbers that we heard and concerned that there's almost a presumption, including the 800-something thousand debt that this budget would give us. All of this is based on a 2.4% tax increase. I would encourage the board to give some direction to the administration in regards to what would a budget look like with a 0% tax increase? Not saying that you're going to vote on that, but I don't see any harm in having additional information. My request would be if the board doesn't give that direction, to have that information to, to look at, to analyze. That you explain to the community why not and how that would hurt. I think the community deserves to know why the school board would not want to see what a budget looks like to give consideration to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, just to kind of answer your question, we, we do know what that looks like. It looks like a $2.5 million deficit with zero.
That's with the current budget, the way it's written. What I'm trying to get at is what does a budget look like without a deficit, without a tax increase?
Understood. And then through, through the process though, just, just so everyone's clear, you know, this, how it all unfolds is more of a marathon than a sprint. And so at the beginning of the budget process, of course, in years past, it might have been presented a different way. You know, with the increase on the front side and, you know, we slowly work ourselves backwards. This year presented it on the other side as a budget from the ground up. And you will be hearing more of what, we, we know what the zero looks like. We know what taking money out of the capital fund will do for us as well. And we will work towards where we need to offset costs as we go into, more into the process because there's so many things that are unknown at this point from the governor's budget, from, as our needs even tighten up from next year. So I, I don't want to give the impression that this is a complete document at this point because we have until June to go in that, in that matter. And it's just a little bit vague at this point to, to give a direction. And I think some of the direction that was given was to stay underneath the index. Index was 2.4 and we need to work from there. And just my personal opinion, what a 0% tax increase looks like is a disaster. So we just have to be careful what we ask for in that, in that regard. Mr. Parker?
I just wanted to comment that, Mr. Parker, I understand what you're asking for. You're asking for basically what is the worst-case scenario? And that would be if we had a 0% increase, what would we have to cut? Now, I'm not sure if that's the administration's choice or is that items that we propose as a board to say, how much of value would this have if we cut that? That's tough for an administration to make those decisions because from their view, I think they need everything they currently have. From the board, I think it's even harder for us because I know currently, I'm not sure I'm willing to cut much either out of what our school district currently has. I don't want to start any outrage either from the current, you know, parents or kids that come to the district as what might happen if we go to zero. I think it's better to be a little conservative right now and wait and see how things unfold.
Well, we disagreed on this subject last year and I guess we'll continue to disagree. I mean, I, I, I actually think that there's a lot of value in the exercise of, of understanding what it would ta, take to get to zero. And, and I do disagree that it's on the board. You know, what's interesting is that I hear a, a lot of the time when we discuss all manner of subjects, we have to trust the administration and, and their recommendations on a wide variety of things. But then when we get to the budget, some of us here think, oh, well, it's up to the board to make the hard choices. And, and so I just think that it's, it's an interesting dichotomy. And I would suggest, once again, that we ask the administration to give us different scenarios and what it would mean and what they would recommend it would take to get us to those scenarios. And then we can figure out what we need to do. And, you know, if in those scenarios, we reject 0% because it's just too draconian or a worst-case scenario, as you put it, then at least we know what that actually means. And I actually think that the exercise itself would find some savings that have yet to be uncovered and get us to a lower tax increase. So that's my two cents.
I'd like to say, I agree with Rick on this one. I think that, like, we go through this and we do a lot of these, see these budget presentations and we see these numbers. And for us, in our minds, we go, oh, that would mean we would have to cut basically all the transportation budget or all the music and sports budget or whatever. But, and so for us, I think it, you know, because we look at these budgets and we look at these numbers and we go to our training and everything, that we know it. But I don't think it's as transparent, and this is just me coming from someone who, you know, recently was sitting in the audience and not here. It's not as transparent to the general public, what would that look like? It is very easy to say, hey, let's, you know, I don't want to raise my taxes. I want a 0% tax increase. That sounds great to me, but if you say, you know, a 0% tax increase means we need to cut all of our music budget, all of our sports, go back to half-day kindergarten, no busing, you know, I mean, if that's what it means, then it, it really is a service to the public to say, this is what it's going to look like. And then you choose if you think that that's what you want to happen. My question is, is this available to the public, this? Because this is a really, I mean, I know our budget is available to the public, but this is like a great, I think this is much easier to read. Like as a regular, normal person who doesn't have all the training, it seems like this would be easier to read. I don't know if it's.
At this point, Dee, we, we published what was required. And this is for your review because we, you didn't have an opportunity to see it yet. So we wanted you to look at it first.
Well, just one comment. It's the same comment I, I make every time we have this discussion. And maybe it's just semantics, but I think there's a difference between identifying cuts and identifying efficiencies and savings. So while we may not want to cut busing, we may want to renegotiate and, and find a way to find savings in busing. And I'm just saying busing because that's the, that's one of the examples. I think when we, we don't want to cause mass panic by saying, well, if we want to look at how, where are we going to find $2.5 million to get a 0% tax increase, which could be considered disaster, worst-case scenario or best-case scenario by, by some. We have to find a way to find $2.5 million. It doesn't mean that we're going to cut anything. You can't cut tires from a car, but you might go with a cheaper brand as opposed to the, the flagship model. So, I mean, there's certain things that you need. There's certain things that we want for our kids in our district. But there could be efficiencies and savings that we need to work on identifying. And like I said, if it's just semantics and we're calling that cuts, fine. But I don't think, I don't think it's a good place to start from to say, we're gonna, we have to make cuts to things in order to find money because I don't think we do. I don't believe that. I don't see that happening particularly anywhere. And I don't think it has to happen here. We just need to work hard to find how we can be more efficient, identify savings. And maybe it doesn't come down to 0%, but I bet we can get it better than 2.4. We, we worked and argued about it last year and we got it down and that's our job.
I just wanted to also make a comment, Mr. Alexander, that we are looking for where we can improve efficiencies. And when we started this budget process, we were very thorough with our building principals and having them justify costs, our department chairs, having them justify costs just to get to what we presented to you in a preliminary budget. So that, that is already taking place. And obviously, it will continue to take place as we move, you know, through the spring. And we have these conversations. So that's, that's certainly on our mind. First and foremost, to look for efficiencies. But the other thing I think you need to realize is the lion's share of this budget is made up of salaries and benefits. So unless you start looking at salaries and benefits cuts in some way, meaning you cut staff or you renegotiate contracts or we don't settle a contract that's currently on the table, that, you know, that also comes into play and that, that's something that's, you know, that's a consideration.
Well, I just want to encourage, you know, as we go to social media and, you know, read the Post and the Mercury, you know, that we need more public input from the community. You know, and specifics of things where they see that we can improve. You know, we, we need to hear from, from parents who have children in the district of where the community. to hear from parents who have children in the district of where the community wants to go as well. And, you know, we're here to represent the community. But if we don't hear from the community, it's kind of hard to make those blanket things of how you want to push someone else's education to go. And then we can all say, well, you know, those guys are out of touch with the community, you know. Maybe it's not that we're out of touch, it's that we have to have a real conversation and be educated about the budget so that we can all make informed decisions and know what we want Potts Grove to look like for the future. So I want to encourage everyone, every parent, if you're a taxpayer, if you're a stakeholder, we need to hear from you somehow or another, and what we want Potts Grove to look like and be like in the years coming forward. So I look forward to a great conversation. Is there any other public comments tonight?
Good evening. My name's Fred Romilius. I live at 155 Boxwood Court. And I wanted to follow up on a couple of comments that were made during the presentations this evening. And one that kind of perked up my ears was the failure rate to finish the student graduation projects on time. If I heard it correct, it was like 25%. Okay? What's wrong with that? That's a serious problem. And on the other side, I hear Mr. Nestor talking about how much we're spending sending money to charter schools. What's wrong with that? What it is is that people are opting out of our system to go someplace else. We're not their school of choice. And we got a little email the other day about the grading scheme that's coming down the road and how, from my perception, we're dumbing it down. You can call it what you like. I'm a very smart guy. I figured out that colleges can figure out what an A is and what a B is regardless of what scale you use. But we're sending a really, really poor, bad, stupid message to our students when we say, an A used to be 93, but it is not anymore. It's a 90. And we're sending a really wrong message when, to get down to the lowest level, if you can't jump that high, we're going to throw it down an extra 15 points, let you jump over it, or let you walk over the goal. That's wrong. You know, if you don't want to stop spending money sending kids to charter school, raise the bar. Don't lower the bar. Students will meet your expectations if you set them high. But if you lower their expectations, I guarantee you, my daughter has figured out that she does not have to work so hard next year. That's the message you're sending. You know, again, colleges are not stupid institutions. They can figure out the difference between a 93 is an A or a 90 is an A. They can do that. But the message that you're very, very clearly sending to students and sending to parents is, it's now easier to walk your way through the Potts Grove School District. And the simple fact that we have 25% of the kids who are not motivated enough to get their graduation projects done on time, they don't fear the consequences, they're not motivated enough, we're sending the wrong message. You guys are sending the wrong message by changing that scale. That's completely unacceptable. It's the graduation project, for goodness sake. You know, I don't care if kids don't want to do graduation projects. My 17-year-old, my 16-year-old, all my daughters, they were teenagers. Who asked them? You know, it's the requirement. Is your boss going to say it's okay not to show up to work 25% of the time, on time? Get real. So let's focus here and set the bar higher. Don't go throwing it down and send the wrong message. You folks are going to have fun doing budget. Sat there for eight years, it's no fun. But, you know, set the goals high. And make some value out of the money that we're dumping into the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romilius.
Justin, I just wanted to point out that 25% of the students didn't create, didn't complete the graduation project under the current seven-point grading scale. So the bar is already set high, and still 25% aren't completing the project.
And so you find that to be acceptable? Is that the standard we want to set? The answer is no, it should be.
You know, Mr. Romilius, we had a lot of committee meetings last year where we discussed grading scale, all the pros and cons. And the majority of the board made a decision that I personally think was the right decision. I respect your disagreement with it. We certainly considered the concerns that you raise. But the reality is, is that the grading scale itself doesn't lower the bar if it's done properly. GPAs will be different if you have a 96 than if you have a 90, and so on and so forth. So if a student thinks that a lower GPA is okay, when they, by working less hard and getting a 90 for an A- minus, as opposed to working harder for an A+ with a higher GPA, then personally, I think that they'll pay the consequences. So, anyway, appreciate your comments.
But with all due respects, sir, they don't pay the consequences because they're not getting, 25% of them are not doing their primary, most major homework assignment of the entire high school and school district career on time. Think about it. You are sending the wrong message to students. And guess what? It's not done yet. The board can override and say, whoa, wait a second, maybe we need to step back and rethink this. It requires five votes.
Thank you, Mr. Romilius. We're going to move on to our curriculum and academic affairs portion of our meeting.
Sorry, Justin, can I just comment on your comment that you made earlier about, we do love input. And I just want to point out that some of the members of the school board are not on Facebook. So there is an email address and that everyone will get it. I hate for some of the members of the board not to be involved in the conversation just because they're not on Facebook.
Thank you. I'm about to shut my page down. Just kidding. Curriculum and Academic Affairs.
Thank you. I asked Mr. Wagman to come and just give us an update about our online learning opportunities for students. I know some of you, since you've been on the board, probably don't know too much about our own cyber program in addition to some other things. And he's just going to review those this evening.
Good evening. I put in your folders a brochure that we used really when we launched. We haven't used this brochure in quite some time. I do know there is a small error on it, which is one of the reasons we don't use it. But I had them. And rather than waste them, the content on it is correct, accurate, and gives you a handy overview of our cyber, district-sponsored cyber offering. I also included a, just an agenda from our most recent orientation. We do family orientations twice a year at the beginning of the fall semester and the beginning of the winter, or I guess, spring semester, first semester and second semester. And this kind of gives you just a quick overview of the kinds of things that we discuss with students and parents. If they don't come to the orientation, and we do make it a point to meet with parents and students as they're coming into the program as well. And it's usually a process where they go through their counselor and then they come to district office. And so I thought you might be interested in taking a look at that. As I mentioned in my written overview that you received in your board packet, we really pride ourselves on providing multiple levels of support for these students right now. As you know, there are 18 of them currently in our cyber program, either full-time cyber or in a blended schedule where they take some of their courses here and some of their courses online. The vast majority of those students are at the high school. We do have two students in the middle school. But we have multiple levels of support. The consortium we use, we belong to, is coordinated through the Chester County Intermediate Unit. And they provide a teaching assistant, a liaison that works directly with the students and the families. And we've detailed here the kinds of things that that individual does. We are in conversation, either email, telephone several times a week. An administrative assistant who works in part for me, in part for the Special Education Department, is also involved and provides, from the district's side, an additional level of support, contacting parents at least weekly, in some instances, more often than that, but under normal circumstances, weekly, coordinates pacing schedules with the BVA teacher liaison. So there is, you know, there's that level of support. In addition, these students are members of the Potts Grove High School and, in two instances, middle school community. They are part of our home schools. And as such, they have access to our counseling, support services, all of our extracurricular activities, dances, so forth. If they go through the program, and we graduated our first student last year, they get a Potts Grove High School diploma. Many of these students come in for reasons, we ask, because it's not really, I truly believe most students are, and I've said this before in other meetings, most students are better served working with our faculty and our buildings, coming into school every day. But there are reasons why families and students make this choice. Sometimes, at least in our experience here, sometimes students are experiencing some pretty serious health issues. Sometimes it is social anxiety. And on occasion, there's, they're just looking for added flexibility because there's something else going on in their lives. And sometimes they're just not thriving. I mean, they're, they may be in truancy, they may be having truancy difficulties. And I do emphasize with every family how this can be a positive. Certainly, the flexibility, the pacing schedules can vary widely. But it's also chock-full of potential distractions and in many ways, much more challenging than coming in every day, and may exacerbate certain disabilities that we can much better deal with than the school district. So we've had, we've had a lot of success and we've had a lot of challenges. I won't, you know, I won't try to sugarcoat it. I mean, we've, you know, truancy issues in schools sometimes end up being truancy issues online. We're going to be coming to you in the spring after we've done, the administration is doing a bit of research on some policies from school districts that have had online programs. In conjunction with the work that's being done on the revised graduation requirements, we will be coming to the policy committee in the spring with a proposal for a policy that will help us codify some of the practices that we've been engaged in. And because sometimes, you know, truancy in school doesn't quite translate the same way to truancy online. Truancy in school is simple. You don't show up, you're trilling. Truancy online really has more to do with work production because a student can log in and then never see them again. So it's, you know, it's got to be more than just checking in in the morning. So we've been working through all that, through some internal procedures. But we really think we're at a point now, especially since there are some things we're going to be doing internally to build capacity so that we can do a lot of this on our own without the assistance of the consortium. And we want to have those procedures codified. And we want to have everybody on the same page as we move forward. Well, we've had a good deal of success with the Brandywine Virtual Academy. There's, gosh, when we started down this road, there were about 30 other public schools around the region. That number has gone up. Certainly, we recognize that people do have options. And I do believe that we can and should compete in all the modes out there for educating. I do believe that in the district, and I believe in the district being the broker of all sorts of educational opportunities for kids in the Potts Groves. So we went into this recognizing that this was a reality. The technology facilitates it. We go in wide-eyed, knowing that, or clear-eyed, I should say, knowing that it's not the right choice for some kids. And sometimes we know it's not the right choice. And yet, you know, it's what the parent wants. And we do everything we can to support that student and the family as they go through that process. But frankly, we also do it because, you know, we have a lot of competition from the charter school sector, the cyber charter sector. And we can do this with the consortium at about 50% of the price of what it costs every time a student goes to a cyber charter. Having said that, though, we are building the internal capacity and the infrastructure to do some of this within our own walls and with our own faculty. And at this point, I mean, Dr. Ziegler can jump in at any point because we've been talking a lot about this. And we're, we've been working on this for, you know, for quite some time. One thing before I go into that, I just wanted to mention, we also do, we also use a service called Apex, and that helps kids with credit recovery. And that's where a student needs just perhaps a unit of instruction, but not the entire course, in order to pass it. It's sort of like summer school, except that they can do it during the school year, they can do that, do it in the summer. So that is another online option. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make you aware of that. But it's used in very limited cases and usually for credit recovery. With our one-to-one and with our learning management system that's gaining a lot of traction in the high school now, Schoology, and even in the middle school with our iPads and iTunes University, we see an opportunity to begin offering online courses within our own faculty or supported by our own faculty and staff within our own school setting. It can look, it can look different depending on the needs and interests of the students. What we are seeing now is many of our traditional courses are picking up online components. So with Schoology, we're seeing that conversations, discussions, activities go on after-school hours into the evening. Assignments are being done digitally. And there will be increasing levels of expectation that students going through the Potts Grove system will have some experience with online education. Because honestly, if we're preparing students for life and work in the 21st century, I doubt they're going to get through a four-year college education or a graduate program without taking online courses. And I assume that most everybody has taken some type of online training as part of their, part of their job responsibility. It's not right for everybody, but it is the world we live in. If we can do this internally, in a safe environment with a lot of support, whether it still is, and you know, this is what we will call a hybrid course. and you know, this is what we would call a hybrid course, where there still is some face-to-face interaction with a teacher, and those relationships are, are maintained, I think we can kinda ease our students into that environment where they can be, where they can be successful over time. So, we are working to build, build that capacity, and again, we're seeing that in, in, in hybrid classes. And we're also, we just launched this year our first fully online class, developed and implemented by one of our teachers in the high school science department. And we've been talking about trying to expand that over time, so that each, each of the core departments offer an online course run by, by one of our teachers using our infrastructure. And by the way, online courses doesn't mean that kids are sitting at home. They could be in our library taking an online course. So, it, it simply means that most of that instruction is, is delivered in a virtual, in a virtual environment. So I think we have to kinda broaden our, our scope of, or our concept of what virtual education looks like. It doesn't have to be somebody sitting at home outside the, the social construct of the school, which is, you know, really what our, what our full-time cyber students do. Although, you know, I know they have cyber networks and activities and so forth, I don't wanna minimize the work and the effort that cyber schools are putting into that socialization piece. But, it doesn't have to look like that, is what I'm saying. I also wanted to mention that on March third, next Tuesday, a, a small team of teachers from the high school and from the middle school will be going to, be going to the String Theory School. I know that one board member has seen the String Theory School there, and they're a charter school, they're in, in Center City, in the old Smith Klein Building, down off of Vine Street at Fifteenth. And we've been invited by, by Apple to participate in the development of courses for the PA Learns Initiative, which is a collaborative effort between the Pennsylvania Department of Education and Apple, to leverage the talents of Pennsylvania teachers in the development of a collection, of a collection of online courses for use across the Commonwealth. So, Pennsylvania Learns will be a, will be a catalog, will have, offer a catalog of online courses through iTunes University, optimized for the iPad, and that will be available, there'll be Keystone Preparation courses, PSSA Preparation courses, courses beyond the scope of what is, what is tested through the state assessment system, and built by educators from across the state. The idea with this effort, beginning on March third, is that some teachers from this area will develop, will convert some of their existing courses, the course outlines, to digital format, specifically iTunes University, although some teachers, our high school teachers will be developing for Schoology, and bring those back to, to their home school, to their departments, and then go back to String Theory later on in the year to share some of that work. All the courses we build will be open and available to other schools, and we can take advantage of online courses that were developed in other schools. So it really is a way of pooling resources and talent, and we have the technology and the infrastructure. And I believe the vision in this district to do that, and to participate, and to be, to collaborate, and, and to contribute significantly to that, to that effort, to that, to that library of, of courses. I wanna go one step further with my vision. We talked during the one-to-one discussions about potential cost offsets, and one of the, one of the offsets that we had discussed, and I said we, you know, we wouldn't realize the financial benefits right away, but over time we would, is as we begin to move away from standard textbooks. I would really rather train our own professional staff to come in in the summer, pay them rather than publishers, to develop course content in interactive iBooks, or other types of eBooks, that speaks specifically to the Pennsylvania core standards, our, our, our power standards here in the district, and be really responsive to, to our needs, and then make those available to other, other school districts. But certainly have, you know, have the capacity internally to build a lot of those materials here. I, again, I don't, I don't see that happening this summer, although I think a little bit will be happening. It's, it's actually beginning to happen now. But I do see over time where, in certain subject areas, we could potentially wean ourselves from, you know, from some of the, some of the text materials that, that we currently use. So, these are just, you know, this is sort of the vision that we've been, we've been discussing as an instructional cabinet with some of our teacher leaders, and, and I, and I share with you tonight.
Any questions from Mr. Wagman?
This one. This effort with the String Theory School, and by the way, Mr. Faulkner and I both went-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Faulkner, you were there, I apologize.
The, this effort that you're discussing, is this to develop alternative classes? Or is it to develop, you know, like I heard you said, prep courses for Keystone's? And the reason I ask is, couldn't this effort ultimately help achieve the goal of having our own cyber charter school as opposed to-
Cyber school, not charter, but yes.
Okay, cyber schools, pardon. Our alternative to cyber charter schools, how about that? That we could offer to our own residents?
Yes. Yes. All those things. It's, it's materials that we can bring back for our, you know, for our, what I wanna call our traditional classes, to supplement the materials that we currently use, to replace certain materials, to take our units of study, and to put them in an interactive environment. And we can certainly use that as the foundation of an online, of a hybrid course, or a full, or a fully online course, absolutely. String Theory, I was in a webinar at four-thirty this afternoon with some of the, some of the folks from the other participating schools, and String Theory already has their iTunes University Library of ninth-grade courses. They're open, they, they essentially are giving them away. You know, we can download it now and put it into our own iTunes University site, and we do have an iTunes University site, and, and, and use them. And, you know, we wanna be part of that, you know, of that building and sharing community as well in Potts Grove.
Much as I admire a building and sharing community-
Let me ask the question. With all the talent we've got, with all the work that's going into this project and these individual courses, have we given any consideration whatsoever to making the content commercially available, so that we can reap a revenue and see this as a projected revenue center instead of just a cost center?
We, we have not had those discussions, to be, to be honest. I, I will, I will tell you that there are a couple of districts that have been in the online learning arena for a very long time, that do see revenue streams by offering their courses to other, other districts, particularly smaller districts, or districts that are trying to come up to speed with online courses as well. I, I certainly, you know, that's certainly an option, it's, it's a possibility. It isn't what the, this particular initiative with the, with the PA Learns, it isn't, it isn't that. Can we do something like that? We can certainly have those conversations, I'm not, I'm not excluding that. We could certainly sell our, our courses. And, I, I'll also tell you that, you know, it, it's certainly possible that with our Apple-certified staff, we could sell our technical expertise to, to neighbor, you know, to neighboring districts as well. That we actually have, you know, have kind of discussed, and that's a model we saw with, used in one of the schools that we looked at as we were doing our own research for the, for the one-to-one.
Your content has value.
Yes.
I would strongly suggest that somewhere along the line, we figure out how to monetize that content.
I hear you, I understand. Again, PA Learns is not that, but, but I, I hear you.
Joe, thanks for articulating the thought that was in the back of my head, but I didn't-
It's business I'm in.
I like it.
I just had a question about, you know, discussing moving toward having our own internal charter school. Or cyber school, sorry, I did it too.
Cyber courses.
Cyber courses. How, I know, you know, you don't have anything as far as written goals or anything, but in your head, how long do you think that that would take for us to get to the point where we would be able to have our own, where someone would be able to basically be a cyber student and get all of their graduation requirements from our internal group?
We're, we're several years from that. You're perfectly honest. There are ways that we could do it, simply by offering some third-party course content that our teachers, who would be PA-certified, highly qualified in those, in those subject areas, which is certainly a criterion we use for our consortium right now. We want all of our, all those teachers to be PA, well, they are PA-certified and highly qualified in their subject area. We could purchase courseware now and assign teachers to kinda oversee that, and, and we can move that process along, but that's not really our, that's not really our vision. And I think really, to turn, take some of our, a sufficient number of our courses to allow a student to do that full-time, we're, we're years away from that. And I'm not even sure I, I, in, in, in a perfect world in my head, I would, I'd love to see students in our building taking a few online courses over the course of their, of their four years in the high school. Because I think there's, there's value in face-to-face, there's value in online, there's value, and that's why I really like the hybrid model best. But, the short answer is we're years away.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Wagman.
Yeah.
Is there any other public comment? Okay. We do need to announce that the board will have an executive session for negotiations after the meeting tonight. And with that, we will make a motion to adjourn.
Can I, before we do that, can I make a comment? Actually, I have something to read here. I was actually given a, a note last night, a handwritten note, from a Potts Grove graduate from nineteen forty-eight. The note says, "Dave, at your next Potts Grove Board of Directors meeting, mention my Potts Grove legacy." She goes, "I was on the West Potts Grove Student Council, and actually suggested the colors maroon and white, and the name Falcons. I don't know why, but everyone bought it, and it was so, and still is." And this is from Glorious Francis. She's actually an eighty-five-year-old woman that's still in the community band, playing, and has been for years, and still bleeds maroon and white. So, she just wanted to let people know that where it came about, and she doesn't want credit necessarily, but she'd like us to know.
That's great. Thank you, Dave, for sharing that. With that, we'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All right. Have a good night, everyone.